Okay, well, welcome everyone to these candidate interviews for San Joaquin County Supervisor, District Four. My name is Jane Wagner Taich and I represent League of Women Voters of San Joaquin County. We're taking advantage of the opportunity provided by virtual options that have become widely available in the last several years to allow us to reach a larger audience with candidate presentations than we were able to reach formerly in public forums. We will be interviewing candidates individually and asking each the same questions which were developed by the League of Women Voters and Faith in the Valley organizations. We will then be making a recording of all the interviews available on our YouTube channel and links will be posted on our website. Before we begin, I want to tell you a bit about the League of Women Voters. The League has an advocacy arm and a voter services arm. With respect to advocacy, the League, after careful consideration and study, will take a stand on issues that are important to the public welfare. With respect to voter services, our role is to educate the public on issues and to give exposure to candidates so that voters can make up their own minds. At no time does the League endorse a candidate or a political party. In that way, we remain nonpartisan. Today's interviews are part of our voter service effort. For today's program, I will ask each candidate the same questions. Only one candidate will be on this Zoom call at a time and they will not be able to hear each other's responses. The candidates will be interviewed in random order. First, I want to welcome Steve Moore. Mr. Moore, you will have up to two minutes to make opening comments before I begin asking you questions. You will have 30 seconds to respond to each of five questions and one minute for a closing statement. The timekeeper will give you 30-second warnings. That's Mary Kenefick and you should be able to see her on your screen. Can you see her?
Yes, I can.
Very good. Okay, then, please begin your opening statement and that is for two minutes.
Well, hello. I am Steve Moore and I have served San Joaquin County and our communities for the past 35 years with the San Joaquin County Sheriff's Office, 12 of those years as the elected sheriff in San Joaquin County. That work experience provides me with direct knowledge of county government and the understanding of all the communities within San Joaquin County. I have solid skills, knowledge, and the drive to better our situation for the future. This is important to me because San Joaquin County is my home. I live here. I have no intention of leaving San Joaquin County and migrating to any other place. And it is also the place where I have my family and we are growing. I have a granddaughter and I have another one on the way. If elected your supervisor, I am ready to engage with the members of the Board of Supervisors, all of whom I currently know. In addition, I have good working relationships with most of the county department heads and know them well enough to say that we can address issues that are facing District Four and the county as a whole in the future and that gives me an opportunity to hit the ground running. I serve as a director for the following boards. I am a member of the San Joaquin County Farm Bureau Federation. I'm a member of the Community Partnership Families of San Joaquin. I'm the board member for the Retired Public Employees of San Joaquin County and I currently serve as a trustee with the San Joaquin County Retirement Association and I've maintained my positions with the Linden Lions Club and Tracy Rotary Club. My number one concern is the unsheltered or homeless in our county. I will work to foster a collaborative front with the city councils and our elected officials and in that, I want to make sure that we address that issue. I also want to address the trash and junk that's being dumped all over San Joaquin County, especially in the rural districts, which is pretty much all of District Four. There are options and I believe we can work together to solve some of these and I see that they are still major issues for both Farm Bureau and the state Farm Bureau process. On top of that, I want to make sure that I get an opportunity to work in support of Ag, so thank you.
Thank you. Our first question for you relates to economic development. There are several government agencies and major businesses vying to come to our county. What are your plans to acquire more professional positions and family wage jobs?
I want to be able to encourage all businesses to come to San Joaquin County and try to get into different areas. Right now, we have a lot of service industry which we need to grow, especially with our wine region, both in the north of the county and in the south of the county. But we also need other manufacturing jobs, light manufacturing jobs. But we need to make sure that we provide quality jobs that have a living wage for all of the employees while we are still pursuing the options to make it affordable for the companies to bring people here. Look at tax credit, look at hiring process, look at helping to encourage our county office of ed to provide training in the areas of the wants of industry. What is it they're looking for? Are they looking for service? Are they looking for technicians? Are they looking for professionals, paraprofessionals? Those types of things. On top of that, we need to make sure that everybody understands that San Joaquin County wants to welcome their business here while we still make sure that we keep our major business, which is agriculture, at the top of the list. Now, agriculture is no longer just going out in the field spreading seeds and watching things grow. It has become a major profession. It requires good management. It requires computer skills. It requires new skills. They're even now looking at a potential of using drones to be able to apply fertilizer and other chemicals to that process. So it is no longer a, just a, as I said, throw seeds out there and let it grow. Thank you.
The next question deals with social service. The county is responsible for receiving money to cover social services for all those in the county. What would be your priorities for spending that money? How would you determine that all people were treated equally when funds were handed out?
Well, with funds, I think we need to focus on the major issues. One of the things that is truly a major issue is mental health care, providing, making sure that they have access to mental health care, access to medications that they need. Also, we now need to go ahead and make sure that we keep ourselves safe from the recent pandemic, keep our families healthy. So, public health is another area that would be a point that would need to be taken care of and funded. The next thing that needs to be happening is that we need a better assessment center locally for the homeless to be able to make sure that they can get those services and make sure that they are provided to them. We need to make sure that those that can accept other government services such as Social Security for our veterans are enabled to be able to do that. The next thing we need to work with, the other part of health services, is the overall arching idea that we keep our county hospital. It is the major jewel in our crown in keeping all of our community safe and well. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next question actually had to do with mental health relative to homelessness. And for example, what would you do to see that the health department is fully staffed and what services do you think they should provide to the homeless specifically?
Okay, with that, in any area, we need to start looking at a process and not just, you know, pick an idea to do this or do that. We need to work with county human resources to pick an overall process on how to train, recruit, and hire these people, these professionals in that area. We need to look at, like as I said, our county office of ed. We need to look at Delta College and our junior college system, look at programs where they can certify psych techs and others to be able to come aboard and as quickly as possible with the appropriate trainings. We need to make sure that they're paid properly and then we can provide possibly incentives depending upon how successful our education process is in bringing those people to us. The other would be to make sure that they have the satisfaction of actually working in the field and seeing positive results from their labors because everybody likes to see the positive outcome of what they're doing. Now, when it comes to homeless, they need to be able to be assessed, they need to be able to given the opportunity, they need to be able to look and say, hey, this is something I want to do. I'm tired of living this way. I'm tired of doing that. I want to get out of that life. So, being able to provide them with quality services, initially assessment, make sure they get their medications, then follow-up wraparound services to make sure that they are continuing to receive whatever services they need from local county government and/or state and the others to be able to make sure that we keep them on a positive path. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question deals with local water issues. San Joaquin County Water Agencies have discussed the possibility of a half-cent sales tax measure for local water infrastructure for the November 2022 ballot. The money would be invested in groundwater management, conservation, flood management, water quality, and supply enhancement. Would you favor this tax? Why or why not?
Well, I would not eliminate a tax totally from the realm of possibilities. But before we go there, we need to start looking at what we actually do have available to us. You're now seeing a lot of cooperation being put between those that have senior water rights, riparian water rights, ancient water rights, and they're now starting to form collaborations where they're spending their access to water amongst themselves to be able to take care of the industry as a whole. I think those are better collaborations we need to start with. I need to look and see what else we can do here locally as to do that. I know that there is a groundwater recharge program with Stockton East Water District. There are plenty of other groundwater recharge programs that are available and I would like to see all of those possibilities put in place before we consider going into a tax. The reason for that is that if you eliminate all the potential possibilities that are there already and jump to a tax and try to start that process, as you know, once you start collecting a tax, then you have to start saying, how are you going to spend it? Which projects are going to be funded first? Who's going to go where? So, I think we would be better served by starting with the local things that we can do now, be able to see benefits from immediately and in very short future before we go on to the next. Now, if those do not yield what we need, then we need to start considering other options up to and including potentially tax, but that would be one of my last resorts.
Thank you. For the final question, please identify the top three issues specifically facing residents of Supervisory District Four and how you will address them.
As I said, the unsheltered homeless is the number one process and point. Number two is the trash and junk that is being tossed out on all of the rural roads and the property owners are being forced to clean those up. And then some cases are being penalized for having it on their property that they didn't dump. They're victims twice. The third would be agriculture and water specifically. We need better water management. Now, as I've said with the homeless, we need a homeless assessment center. Now, I have the opportunity to say that we could form a collaboration, as I said, with the cities and our local representatives, there are senators and our assembly people, and go to the governor and petition the governor for use of the Closing DVI Dual Vocational Institute to become a homeless assessment reception center. That would give law enforcement here in the county a place to take people that need to be assessed and be able to get resources. So that's one process. Now, people have said that that may not work and if it doesn't, that's fine, but I need to make sure that we start somewhere. If we don't start doing something in that vein, we are not going to get any better. Second, when it comes to trash and junk, want to look at the master contract that the county has with the waste management system that currently has it and renegotiate that contract to include picking up the trash and junk that they can, whether they want to do it as part of their regular routes or add additional routes. Now, will there be some additional costs to that contract? Absolutely. But I believe it will get the job done a lot quicker than the way it goes. Thank you.
Thank you. And then you have one minute, please, for your closing statement.
Well, I'll use my one minute to finalize the issues we talked about and then the last one was support for agriculture. You know, having served last three years as a board member and I've recently been elected to the Board of Directors for Farm Bureau, I will be a true advocate for our agribusiness, specifically in the area of water. Fallowing ground is not going to help us. It's not going to keep our food costs down. Trying to make sure that we find a reasonable process to be able to collect local water and then work in concert with the rest of the counties to have the state address the other options available to us to be able to create and have more water available to us throughout the year. With that, I'll add, I'm willing to work hard. I've got the drive. I have the know-how. I can work together with county government to make positive changes in the situations we are currently facing. And if you look at where we are, we've already lost in the last several months, we've lost, what, 4,500 points on the Dow? I'm starting to see things that I saw back in 1992 when I got laid off. I also know that I saw the things, same similar things happening now at 2007, so we need to have a plan ready to go for the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moore, and thank you for participating.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. It is gratifying to know that you are taking that option to educate the public. We need to make sure that the voters vote and whichever way they vote is fine with me. The process is the process and they need to be able to utilize that process for their own good. So, as I said, the fact that you're getting them or pushing them to be responsible voters, I applaud.
Thank you very much. Now, I want to welcome candidate number two, Nancy Sinclair. I'm Jane Wagner Taich representing the League of Women Voters of San Joaquin County. Ms. Sinclair, for today's program, I am each, asking each candidate the same questions and none of the candidates will be able to hear each other's responses. The interview order is random. You will have up to two minutes to make opening comments before I begin asking you questions. You will have 90 seconds to answer each of five questions and one minute for a closing statement. The timekeeper, Mary Kenefick, will give you 30-second warnings. Can you see the timekeeper on your screen?
Can I see the timer? I can see the timer.
She's waving.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, well then, let's get started with your opening statement for two minutes.
All right, so, my name is Nancy Gonzales Sinclair and I'm writing for County Board of Supervisors in District Four. I come from a working-class family. My mother came from Mexico to the United States when she was 16 years old and she worked in the Central Valley, she worked in the fields. My father was a railroad worker. He worked for the Santa Fe Railroads and my stepfather is a retired Stockton Unified Teacher. I was influenced by my mother because she spent 13 years becoming a teacher and she and my stepdad inspired me to become an educator. I am a second-grade teacher. I teach at Live Oak Elementary in Lodi Unified School District. I've been a teacher for 20-plus years. I do love the students. They're full of wonder and joy and they fill my days with like happiness, actually. But I decided that I would like to run for, to be a public servant and be a supervisor and I think that I can do a lot of great things for the community. I could be a good leader because I've been a leader at my school site. I've been a mentor to teachers and students and I've been a coach as well. So, some of the things I would like to work on as a candidate are mental health. During the pandemic, mental health came to the forefront to all of us, being isolated and alone and disconnected from others, I think was very difficult. I believe that we need to give services to everyone in the community that needs help with mental health and I believe that the people that are mental health professionals should be trained and culturally, is that it? What? Two minutes. Oh my goodness. Okay.
We have some questions that will help. And the first question has to do with economic development. There are several government agencies and major businesses vying to come to our county. What are your plans to acquire more professional positions and family wage jobs?
Yeah, I think building business in our area is huge. I mean, we have a lot of agriculture, we have a lot of wineries. We could always grow more in our area. I think that we should support small businesses. We should create more jobs for people as well. I would like to encourage, as a supervisor, I would encourage small businesses to open our area and hopefully draw businesses in so that we have more economic growth in our area. I think that's a very important thing to have.
Thank you. The next question deals with social service. The county is responsible for receiving money to cover social services for all those in the county. What would be your priorities for spending that money? How would you determine that all people were treated equally when funds were handed out?
So, as I was saying about the mental health, I think that's very important. We should put funding into that and we should have training for mental health professionals regarding different cultures and being linguistically responsive to all people in our community, which is very diverse. I also would like to, one of my priorities would be homelessness. I did the point and time count and it was very impactful talking to several of the unsheltered. A lot of them were struggling with mental health and drug addiction problems. I feel like we need to help our citizens, our fellow citizens get back on their feet and I would put funding towards that so that they could have wraparound services, education, training, mental health services, and any kind of drug addiction program that they need because all of the homeless are very different and have different needs. So, I'd like to work on that as a supervisor.
Thank you. The next question actually deals with mental health relative to homelessness, but you also might want to talk about any other social services or also what do you see to do to see that the health department is fully staffed? And do you want to tell us a little more about what services you think they should provide to the homeless?
Yeah, so I think that the mental health department should get more money. I was reading an article recently in the Stockton Record about having difficulty retaining a lot of therapists and mental health professionals because they have been under a lot of stress. People have been seeking their services. I think that we should give competitive wages so that people are happy and would like to stay in our county, working for our county, helping our community members. In regards to the homeless, I do believe that all of them are very different. They have different needs. Not every one of them had support. They didn't have a safety net when perhaps they lost their homes and I believe that we do need to help each other. I feel like we need to understand that we are all connected and that each one of us can help each other and that's important to me.
Thank you. The next question deals with local water issues. San Joaquin County Water Agencies have discussed the possibility of a half-cent sales tax measure for local water infrastructure for the November 2022 ballot. The money would be invested in groundwater management, conservation, flood management, water quality, and supply enhancement. Would you favor this tax? Why or why not?
Well, it's interesting. I've been learning a lot about water in our area and I believe it's very complex. It's very layered depending on who you're talking to. I have a cent, I think that that's okay. I think that would be okay if it's helping with conservation. I know that groundwater is depleting and several people who have wells have to dig very deep to get water now because of the drought and the, it's, the groundwater is not being replenished like it was before and we should, of course, take care of our delta and try to conserve water. Conservation is very important and I believe everyone should have clean drinking water and, you know, our farmers depend on water. Water is life. It is the foundation of us all, actually. So, I believe that taking care of water is extremely important and so I guess half a cent would be fine to help our environment.
Thank you. For the final question, please identify the top three issues specifically facing residents of Supervisory District Four and how you will address them.
So, I talked about my first two. My first two were mental health and homelessness. My third one would be public safety. I believe that we should live in communities where we feel safe to walk on the streets, go riding bikes with our families. It's important that we give funding to first responders, police officers, sheriffs, and we should help all of them as well. I think that firemen are extremely brave. They put their life on the line every day for us and we should give them funding for things that they need. I believe that it's important for law enforcement to be trained in culturally responsive strategies and they should also connect with the community. I think building community is extremely important to making our community better. So, those are some of my priorities. I also believe that it's important to give back to the youth and provide programs for them so that they can go and be places and do positive things after school.
Thank you. And then you have one minute for a closing statement.
All right, so, it's my dream to serve the community and I believe that representation in all government offices is essential to ensure diverse voices are heard and included at the table when decisions are being made. If I win, and hopefully I will, I would be the first Latina ever elected to the County Board of Supervisors in San Joaquin County. And I think being a leader in having a background in education and research gives me a unique perspective. I understand the stories of many and not just a few and I would work hard to be open. I would listen to others. I would work with others to make our community the best that it can be.
Thank you very much and thank you so much for participating today, Ms. Sinclair.
Thanks for having me.
Okay.
All right.
Go ahead.
Now, I want to welcome candidate number three, Paul Brennan. I'm Jane Wagner Taich representing the League of Women Voters of San Joaquin County. Mr. Brennan, for today's program, I'm asking each candidate the same questions and none of the candidates will be able to hear each other's responses. The interview order is random. You will have up to two minutes to make opening comments before I begin asking you questions. You will have 90 seconds to answer each of five questions and one minute for a closing statement. The timekeeper, Mary Kenefick, will give you 30-second warnings. Can you see her on your screen?
I can, thank you.
Very good. So, go ahead with your opening statement, please, two minutes.
My name is Paul Brennan. I recently retired from the county. 26 years of service, my first six as a correctional officer, my last 20 as a probation officer. And people have asked, why do you want to do this? And I just have a passion for public service. I did this for so many years and I'd like to continue, but obviously in a different capacity now, no longer as a peace officer, but I still believe I can serve the public and I believe I've got some ideas and in addition to that, I like to think that after over a quarter century of working with the county, I have some idea what works and what doesn't. You know, I feel as though, goal-wise, I certainly want to be able to keep community safe, hold government accountable, and just get things done. It sounds pretty simple, but I know that's, that's a pretty daunting task in addition to everything else that, all the other challenges we're going to face.
Thank you. First question relates to economic development. There are several government agencies and major businesses vying to come to our county. What are your plans to acquire more professional positions and family wage jobs?
Well, I'll tell you that I'm actually supported by a number of labor groups and so I do feel as though that speaking specifically with respect to their concerns, it makes sense to bring in people of all skill sets, of all levels, including the professional skill set. And I think part of that is advocating to have a wage that makes sense, certainly something that's livable for folks, not necessarily a quote-unquote "living wage" but just something that certainly they can support a family on and it gets tougher and tougher. We obviously see the circumstances surrounding us with inflation, higher gas prices, and everything else. I would certainly look for opportunities to work with basically businesses and any entity that looks to be coming into this area and try and foster some relationship to be able to provide the best benefits available in terms of development moving forward, but certainly it would have to be measured growth.
Thank you. The next question deals with social service. The county is responsible for The county is responsible for receiving money to cover social services for all those in the county. What would be your priorities for spending that money? How would you determine that all people were treated equally when funds were handed out?
Well, I think what you have to, you can't really make the guarantee that everybody's going to get equal service. Life just doesn't work that way. But what I, I could certainly strive to guarantee is, is the idea that everybody would have an equal opportunity. Everybody would have equal access, right? And certainly county services, in addition to certainly, you talk specifically about emergency services. We're stressed over the last few years with COVID, having to deal with that in addition to providing services. But, but I think, you know, the, the goal should be to be able to provide the best level of customer service and to the public. And, you know, with respect to being able to, like I said, make those sort of guarantees, I think the understanding has to be that, you know, we're actually providing the opportunities and, and resources available to folks, you know, with the hope that certainly we can meet the capacity and need of everyone in the community. I think mental health has to be a priority. We've seen that firsthand, and I think that's lacking whether you're dealing with a senior population, a juvenile population, certainly the homeless population, which is one of the, the focus areas that I'm concerned about in addition to crime and ag-water related issues for our district.
The next question actually deals with mental health relative to homelessness. Many of the homeless have mental health problems. Mental health services are the responsibility of county government. What would you do to see that the health department is fully staffed? And what services do you think they should provide to the homeless?
Well, currently, obviously, they're providing services along with other county departments. I, I would like to do an assessment by, by a number of means. Right off the top of my head, the thing that comes to mind is speaking with department heads, which I've had an opportunity to speak to over a dozen of them in, in preparation for the job. And, and I think also speak to the staff, the folks that work, your, your rank and file folks, and get their perspective on what's working and what isn't working to try and get a whole, a whole sort of picture perspective on how things are working within the system. The system itself is stressed. It, it didn't help certainly that the state mental health system was dismantled over fifty years ago. That has sort of been sort of the, the progenist, I think, for where we're at today. Obviously, there's a lot of other factors involved. But, you know, I think mental health has to be at the top. There, there are certainly a number of other services, ancillary services that could be provided, health, general healthcare services. But it certainly would be a leading concern for someone like me coming into the job.
Thank you. The next question deals with local water issues. San Joaquin County Water Agencies have discussed the possibility of a half cent sales tax measure for local water infrastructure for the November twenty twenty two ballot. The money would be invested in groundwater management, conservation, flood management, water quality and supply enhancement. Would you favor this tax? Why or why not?
I haven't, I haven't read the language, so I'd like to read the language before I make a decision on that. You know, I'm certainly hesitant on raising taxes in general. But I also understand the need to try and address the water issue. And my belief is, my understanding is, is that there is a connection there with respect to Sigma, State Groundwater Management Act. And the fact that, that all groundwater basins are going to be responsible to be paying for a portion of, of, you know, the services with respect to, I think, for lack of a better word, it's, it's not a service fee, but to be, be a partnership with that, there, there has to be an understanding that there is a cost involved. But again, without weighing in specifically, I'd like to see the language, what that looks like. I think that's alternative at this point.
Thank you. For the final question, please identify the top three issues facing residents of Supervisory District Four and how you will address them.
Right. So issue number one, clearly from the folks that I've talked to in the, in the district is homelessness. Just in general, what I look at is three different aspects of that. One is the mental health component. We touched on that earlier. I would say that, you know, we should look at potentially streamlining the conservatorship program for those folks that just don't have the wherewithal to take care of themselves. Certainly making, continuing to make those services available. Obviously, we would have to continue to staff and staff up mental health services or behavioral health, to be more exact. The other issue, crime, we've seen, we've seen an uptick in that, and that is a, a bit disconcerting, especially with my background as a probation officer. I just, I, crime is near and dear to my heart with respect to tackling that as an issue. Certainly want to give all available resources to the law enforcement community. That's not just your sheriff's department, but probation, the DA's office and, and any ancillary services. And the idea there is, is giving them every opportunity to basically be able to do their job with the resources at hand. I am not a fan of defunding the police. I think that would be certainly a step backwards. And the other issue out here is ag and water. And I like to think that specifically with the water issue, you have, you know, a number of different ideas that are floating around out there that try and find local solutions to this problem. North San Joaquin Conservation District is, thank you, Mary. And, you know, they're, they're doing some innovative things as well as South San Joaquin. And I think that we should be looking at those as some alternatives in addition to creating storage capacity as an option.
Thank you. So you have one minute for your closing statement.
Right. Well, I, I just want to thank you and the League of Women Voters for your time, giving me the opportunity to speak and meet with your group. You, you know, I, I know your group is a big advocate on voting rights, and I, I think that's something that certainly we should all be concerned about moving forward. You know, I, I think we've got issues that we still need to get addressed, certainly at the federal level with respect to voting access, structural biases such as gerrymandering. And, you know, this concern about situations where, where entities would have the ability to overturn those results without, you know, listening to the voters. I think that that was so critical during the last election. So I think with all of that being said, I certainly believe that I can do the job. Again, I've worked for county government. I have experience working with a number of different issues, both in aspect of crime, the homeless issue. And I also spent time on our local water board, five and a half years there, the last two and a half as president. Certainly feel like I've got some experience dealing with water and those issues as well. So thank you again, and have a good evening.
Thank you very much for participating, Mr. Brennan.